Good morning, everyone, and welcome. If we can please stand for the Pledge Allegiance of the Flag of the United States of America.
And the flags behind here on the wall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for joining us today at this annual joint delegation meeting. My name is Lori Alhadev, and I have the privilege of serving as the Chair of the Broward County School Board, District Four School Board Member, representing Parkland, Coral Springs, Margate, Tamarack, and North Lauderdale. Before I turn it over to Chair Pizzo, I first would like to go around and allow my colleagues to introduce themselves. Mrs. Hickson.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Debbie Hickson. I am one of the countywide school board members, Seat Nine, so I represent all of you, and thank you for coming today.
Good morning. I'm Jeff Holness. I am the school board member for the wonderful District Five Broward County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chair Pizzo, would you like to introduce your colleagues?
Beginning at my left, we have Representative Darryl Campbell. To his left is Representative Robin Bartman, and happy birthday to Dr. Roslin, Senator Osgood. Followed by my work sister, Leader Senator Lauren Book. Representative Hillary Cassell is here. Much younger sister. Senator Tina Polsky, representing parts of Palm Beach and Broward. Thank you for being here. Representative Chip Lamarcas, always looking sharp. Representative Honchowski. Representative Patricia Williams, former Chair. We have my Vice Chair, the wonderful, the extraordinary, the dynamic Representative Marie Woodson. I'm Jason. The security told me I was too old to be in this building. That's it. That's what we got. But I would like to recognize, because these are the people that you will talk to the most when we're in Tallahassee two of the next weeks over each month, and then 60 straight days, can I have the staff, Representatives and Senators, please stand up? Okay, let's go.
All right. Thank you so much. I first would like to give a shout out and thank you to Shay from the Broward Education Foundation, and thank you so much for all your dedication and everything you do for Broward County Public Schools students. Today, the Superintendent and his staff will provide a presentation on Broward County Public Schools and the 2024 Legislative Priorities. Before I turn it over to Superintendent Locata, I would like to thank the delegation for your commitment to our students, teachers, and staff. We appreciate your support in securing an appropriation for the Athlete Mental Health Pilot Project. I would now like to turn it over to the amazing Superintendent Locata and staff for their presentation. Before they move into their full presentation, we will turn it over to Senator Osgood and Representative Lamarcas for a check presentation.
Well, good morning, everyone, and I'll speak more in a few moments, but we do want to accept this check presentation. We have our presentation of our own, so the Board Chair and I will be up here. I do need, if anyone has a big Sharpie, so I can endorse that check right away and get that in the bank, we'd be very happy for that. But Representative Lamarcas?
Thank you, Superintendent, and I want to say this is a co-presentation with a really good partner from Broward County Public Schools, and as a Broward County Public School graduate myself, and in the Hall of Fame, thank you Shay. Northeast, you saw the cadets earlier this morning, that's my school, but when this project came to us, it was specifically about mentoring and mental health for athletes in high school. And I think I've gotten tagged with NIL issues and things like that, and if you've read the paper, that may be coming to a high school near you, I'm not sure, but either way, what we want to make sure is that young budding high school athletes that are going off to school are ready for it. If you remember the case in Deerfield Beach, I know Patricia Williams does, you know, kids can be fragile. The strongest and the most athletic kids in high school can be fragile mentally, and we want to make sure they're ready for what they're getting themselves into and the great career they could possibly have. So I'll turn it over to Senator Osgood, but this was really an important project for her and I to work on, and we're just proud to be able to bring some money back to Broward County Public Schools for the Student-Athlete Mentoring Program.
So this is how we reach success when Democrats and Republicans work together and prioritize our kids, and this is a big deal. A lot of times when you're not working internally within the school system, you really don't understand the great work that people in education do or the heavy burdens that they deal with. And a lot of our athletes are struggling because we put a lot of pressure on them to be great doing sports and off the field, and many of them live in home situations where their education and their athleticism is a way to, opportunity to a different type life. So to work with Representative Lamarcas to make sure that we are preparing our athletes as a former athlete, Fort Lauderdale Flying L, that used to score at least 20, 25 points every time we played Northeast. It is very important that we begin to look at athletes differently, and we do the basic things that we need to do to support them to be holistic persons and not just focus on them when it relates to sports. So I was happy to work with Chip. I'm looking forward to working with Chip to get some more money. And just know that I am a native of Broward County. I'm forever committed to kids and education. I'm never, ever, ever going to go away and stop fighting for our schools and our children. So it is an honor to be here today making this presentation, and thank all of you for what you do.
So I am a native of Broward County, Holy Cross, but I do want to say, we don't understand what Dr. Osgood and Representative Lamarcas says. Let me tell you a story about two children in Dade County about 10 years ago. One was two inches shorter. They're both All-State running backs, All-American running backs. One was two inches shorter, 10 pounds lighter, and a tenth of a second slower. They were both All-Americans, full ride scholarships. One went into the NFL, a smaller, slightly slower one is now struggling. We don't count on that. We push our children so hard to be so great, and we forget that they are just kids at the end of the day. They're still kids, and a tenth of a second and a couple pounds makes a difference to where they want to go, and when it's not there, it's hard. So if we're educating them and preparing them for the life after sports, this will go towards that as well, because it's important. It's very important. So at this time, four former high school athletes, soccer in New Jersey, football here, basketball here, basketball here, we'd like to do a really nice presentation for Dr. Osgood, her jersey from Fort Lauderdale, and her number. This is her jersey and number. We also have Chip Lamarcas' number from Northeast High when he played there as well. I think it's an easy replacement for what they've done for us, and I do appreciate your comments about both sides of the aisle coming together and benefiting children, because that's what it's about, and that's why we're in it. So thank you both very much. Enjoy those jerseys. Awesome, awesome, and awesome.
Where in Jersey? Down the street from me. Any of these high school athletes that are having trouble putting on weight, come see me, I'm very good at it.
That comes with that vowel at the end of your name, sir.
Yes, it does.
As I know very well. So we're here today to try and get to some of the meat and potatoes of what we do. Before we get started, I think it's important that everyone in this room understands that when I arrived, how many days ago, John?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four days ago, I came into an amazing staff that has really just wrapped their arms around me and made sure that we're doing the right things and moving in the right direction. So at this time, I'd like to introduce that staff, starting with John Sullivan, next to me, of course. I want to go to my executive cabinet, Chief Alberti, please stand up. Dr. Joe Phillips, he's CIO. David Azerito, Chief People Person and baseball fan. Simone Higginsworth, our Chief Academic Officer. Dr. Valerie Wanza, our Chief of Staff, Deputy Superintendent. Our newly acquired Chief of Facilities that has the hardest job in the world, Mrs. Chubkowski, Deborah Chubkowski, stole her from Broward College, and of course, our Deputy for Money, who's going to take that check, Ms. Marte. Finally, a new addition who I've worked with for many, many years, our Deputy Superintendent in charge of teaching and learning, and just someone who's already made an impact in many of the communities, Dr. Howard Hepburn. Thank you guys very much for doing that. Let's go into the presentation real quick, and I'm not going to read slides to you. When I arrived, you know, all you saw was some tough headlines about Broward County Public Schools. You look a little deeper, and you realize there's some really great things going on, and that's what we're going to accentuate, and we're going to talk about how we can get to that next level. You know, 93.9% graduation rate. The graduation rate keeps getting harder and harder because the bar keeps being raised, which it should be. That's a good thing, except when you look at 94%, you're thinking, if I got a 94% on all my tests growing up, I'd be really excited. Chip's never seen a 94% on his test growing up. However, there's 6% missing, right? 6.1 to be exact. What if you're the parent of one of those children? And when you times it by 250,000 kids, it starts looking like a much bigger number, not a percentage. So we've got to think about that. 100% is what we go for. Every meeting we start at School Board, Chair Heldoff says exactly that, 100% graduation, 100% on grade level. We're doing really well with the 11 of the 14 tested areas. There's two that we're working on that'll get us to that A. That is our ultimate goal. We need to be an A. Palm Beach is an A, Broward is, Miami-Dade is an A. We are one point away, which is about 13 points when you do the calculation, so we're one percentage point, but it's about 13 points in each of the columns. So we're really trying to show that we are an A district, and we're going to work on those areas. 254,000 students, 254,000 students. The average, anyone know the average-sized school district in the country? Anyone want to take a stab at it? It's under 6,000. It's under 6,000. So we are the sixth largest, but there's a massive gap between 6,000 and the average size, and those who are from upstate, New York, or New Jersey, or Long Island, you realize there are only 1,000 kids in each district. We are just massive because we're countywide, which is okay. There's a lot of benefits to being large, and there's some challenges, but we want to take care of those benefits, and this is one of those benefits, being in the room with some amazing elected officials that are going to go up to Tallahassee or Washington and make a difference for us. Yeah, that wasn't an ask, was it? We're trying to improve also the career readiness. You're standing on one of the top 100 schools, or sitting in one of the top 100 schools in the country right here. We really like that. We have a couple of them. They're colleges, they're career training centers, they're opportunities for so many students. We remember in my age, when I was going to school, you had one track to college or one track to work. That is not our option anymore. That's the child's option, before the adults made that decision. Our decision is to give them everything so they can do both, and they get to choose. And by opening more CTE programs, more magnet programs, offering the availability of these to all students with transportation, that's not cheap, we are doing what we need to do to keep our students in Broward County Public Schools. As families move away, we want to make sure we keep everyone that's here. Athletics, we know, is important, incredibly important, but what you saw also was a state champion cheerleading squad this morning. Are they still here? They were here. All of us participated. I know it was a major part of my life, it was a major part of my children's lives. We know that extracurricular activities keep students involved and engaged in activities, and it's harder and harder to find coaches, and those supplements don't pay what they are. So we're looking at some things that make the difference in children's lives, because many children go home to an empty house, or they're taking care of their brothers or sisters. We want to make sure that if they're engaged in something extracurricular, or something on the weekend, that we are able to do it at full potential without cutting out some students or some schools. We want to make sure that's it. All right. Our dual-language, one more time, they came in yesterday at our board meeting. Dual-language is so important. When we look at our demographics, it just came out, we are 38.8 Hispanic, we are currently 36.4 African-American, and we are 17% white. That is not the Broward County Pete Locata grew up in. We need to be prepared to teach the students that live here. We need to be prepared to understand their cultures, understand their languages, and make sure we are adjusting to them as well. It's not our job to tell them how to act all the time. We have to figure out how we should be acting to help them. It's changed. The game has changed. Next, oh, there we are. Back one, back one, back one, back, back, back. Some of the good thing, nope, one more forward.
We're going to get there.
All right, we're there. The debate program in this county, that was probably the first thing I was told when I became Superintendent, you know you're going to keep the debate programs, the best in the world, you're going to keep that, right? And I sort of answered, uh-huh, but I didn't realize what that meant. I really didn't understand the gravity of that situation, and it's been a topic, and we're going to continue doing that. Chess. I walked into Apollo's Media Center, I'm sorry? Yes, chess. I walked into Apollo's Media Center, and we cut the ribbon the other day. It was a great thing, because the media center should be the epicenter of a school, and we had 20, 30 adults in there, and we had 40 children playing chess, and many of them were using the new chess pieces that tell you what the moves are and what they can do, because they were learning. They were actively engaged. They didn't even know they were adults in the room, and it was a brand-new facility that should have opened maybe a year or two ago, but it was just what we're supposed to do, expose children to some things that they're not usually going to see. We need support on that at all times. Computer science, we know the importance of that. That's going to be something that every middle school will eventually have, a computer program as well as a medical program. That is my vision, so they can move into high school and really hone their skills in, and see if we can get many of our students going into college as sophomores and juniors instead of just a few credits. Let's get them into the secondary or the college level as sophomores and juniors. Let them have that opportunity to move as fast as possible. JROTC, near and dear to my heart, we have a program at every high school. That is impressive, the largest in the country, and we wish to continue that. We did see Northeast High here today present the colors, which is awesome. We really like the diversity of those programs and the opportunities that exist, that they get to go to team camps, they get to go to discipline camps, they really do a great job of rounding out the skills of these students who are offered many opportunities, whether it is in the service, or whether it is in local government, or even going to college. So we want to continue those programs. The more we have that students get interested in, the better off we are. Finally, Cambridge is coming on strong. I come from a place that has the largest Cambridge program in the world, at least last year and this year, but I'm hoping that'll change, because Broward should be the largest Cambridge place in the world. So we're going to try to do that. We're going to try and install those. Dr. Hepburn has been charged with putting a Cambridge program in every middle school, so we're going to be working on that over the next year or two, so they are ready for high school and start taking those acceleration courses. This is key. When we look at acceleration courses and the success of a child in middle school and high school, the graduation rate is usually around 99.5 to 100%. Let me say that again. When a child is exposed to an acceleration or advanced coursework, which is college credit, when they're in middle school or in high school, the graduation rate of those children is almost 100%. We are going to deep dive into every middle school and high school schedule for every child and give them an opportunity to be exposed to that. That is forward-thinking. We are not going to gatekeep any child who wants to take opportunities there. We can back off. But if we look at those numbers and not learn from them, shame on us. So let's put every child, a child that maybe not looked like me, maybe a child that you wouldn't think, or maybe a child that's a discipline problem, that's not our call. Let's give him or her that opportunity, because if we get to 100% and see that they can be successful in advanced coursework, and they walk out of that classroom instead of a remediation class saying, you know, I don't get PE because I have to go to reading, but they walk out of that classroom and it's a geography AP course or Cambridge course and say, I did it, I am smart enough to do this, we've done what we're supposed to. Now they'll just take off. So we have to instill that for every child. If you look at the bottom of all of our stationery, it says, "Everyone counts." When a child walks through the door, their weight is one, whether they come from a certain zip code, whether they look a certain way, whether a certain language they speak, no, they're all the same weight. They count the same, and that's where we're going to work towards with the facilities, because we know children who walk into dilapidated facilities, they don't feel the same about when they, children that walk into new facilities. So we're going to work hard on that. At the end of the day, we're on the right track, but we need what we need. School safety is huge. We're trying to build our own police force. We know that takes money. Broward County should be the beacon and the epicenter of school safety, and we have to determine it. That changes every day. That is not something you can just fix and say, okay, it's done. We also know that we have to look at the support for our schools. As we look forward into what our future looks like, they're out there in the hallways, they're in the school down the street, they're in the elementarys. That's what our future is. It's 18 years away, and hopefully, when I retire in less than 18 years, I'm comfortable with the generation that's running the greatest country in the world and makes educated decisions when they go into a voting booth, and understands the implications of being involved civically, like we have. Many of us in here have chosen this as our pathway. I would never look back. I was a contractor, I was in business, I sold it, 23 years old, and I've never looked back, and I wouldn't change a thing, because I'm in the right place at the right time. So I'm very, very fortunate, I'm very grateful, but most importantly, I'm really passionate to make sure we do this thing right for every child, and I want the neighbors to the south and the neighbors to the north to look and go, damn, what are they doing? They just kicked our ass. And that's why, that's okay, that's okay. At the end of the day, that's what we do, and that's what we're going to do, and we're going to continue doing that. I do want to say a special thank you to the person who put all this together. I saved her for last, Megan Turetsky, who's awesome. Oh, I'm sorry, General Counsel is here, Ms. Batista, our General Counsel. But Megan put most of this together, you know her, I've really encouraged her to start smiling a little bit more. She never smiles, she needs to smile more, but she's put a lot of work into this, and I thank you very much. So thank you all, and I'll give up the mic now.
Really quick, we want to make sure there's plenty of time for you guys to discuss everything. The Superintendent did leave out, when he mentioned his executive cabinet, that not only am I the youngest, but I am also the best-looking. So some of the highlights from the 2023, from the 23 session, you guys helped us secure not only the $250 for the Athletic Mentoring Program, the $250,000, but also the $800,000 for our adults with disability. Years back, it was cut, but due to the work of this delegation, we've got that funding, which is critical for that population, every year since, for the last six or seven years, so we thank you for that. I'm not going to go over all this. All this is in your packet. I just want to go real quickly. You all know the dates. Our students will be going to Tallahassee the 16th through to 18th. You guys are always amazing welcoming our students, and it really gives us an opportunity to showcase what we do here in Broward. So just when Megan calls, please give her some meetings for our lovely students. Also, I want to thank Andrew Knowles, she's amazing to work with in terms of dealing with the delegation and getting our students there, and just throughout the whole year, she's a great resource for you guys. These are some of the district events. The one that I want to call out that's coming up is Read for the Record, which is October 26th. That's a great event. If you haven't done it before, we encourage you to do it. We'll make sure you have the information, you should have it, and just RSVP, and you get to read to the kiddos. It's a great event. We hope you join us on that date. I'm going to give it over to Ms. Turetsky to two minutes on the legislative platform.
Sure, thank you. I just called out a couple of our top four legislative priorities that are consistently in our top priorities, mainly funding, preserving the school board's constitutional and home role authority, and teacher salaries. So I know we're going to move into an open discussion about legislative platform, but while you're speaking about that, I'd like you to take these as, you know, high priorities from the district. So we can move into an open discussion now, Chair.
Yep. Thank you. So everybody has in their packet this one pager. We reduced the platform to specifically focus on the school board's priorities. Two things that I'll just start with to bring up is the funding, to help provide funding for multilingual classroom programs. We are moving forward as a school board to get a multilingual committee, so that our parents are actively involved with helping us to go up to Tallahassee, to help you, to help us, to help to bring the funding to our schools. And then the last piece that I would just like to focus on, and Dr. Locata brought this up, is that we want to start our own police force. However, we need help with funding, and whether that is a funding over a three-year period of time, allocation from the state, allocation from the federal government through grants, but we need help. You know, we are being asked to pay for our SROs more and more money. We went from about, I think, $68,000 to like $108,000 per an SRO, but they want more. And I think that it would be advantageous of us as a school board, as a school district, to start our own law enforcement agency, but we're going to need help. And so we're going to, you know, we don't, I think that if we go about it in small bites, asking for that funding, I think we could eventually get there in a three-year period of time. So any of my colleagues would like to speak? Mrs. Hickson?
Okay. I'll jump in. Also, you know, funding, of course, is a lot of the ask that we have, but very, very important that we support our schools by giving enough funds that we can pay our staff appropriately. We are in a huge inflation period, and we just can't keep up with the salaries of the staff. And we also have added in our platform something that's very personal to me, and it is to expand the funding for the exceptional student programs, especially in the college career and technical education programs. We provide training for students through 22, but we also have adult training centers and students that transition into adulthood, there are still, we're still, as a state, lacking places for them to land that are appropriate. Some of them can work, but they need constant job coaches, not as vocational rehab now. They'll send a coach maybe once a week, you know, so forth, but there's a group of young adults that could be part of the workforce, but they need more coaching, and they're not quite as independent. So that's something we'd really like to, we added this year, and we would really like you to take a look at. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Holness?
Yes, and I'd just like to add to Board Member Hickson's emphasis on our ESE programs, our ESE students. We had at our last meeting, when this was brought up, to increase or expand funding for our ESE programs and our ESE students. I believe it was suggested maybe the possibility of increasing the weighted amount for each ESE student, so we're hoping there can be some advocacy. there can be some advocacy in that regards to provide more funding. Oftentimes, our ESE students are in need of greater resources, greater programs, and attention. So we are hoping that the, that can be a legislative priority that will be advocated for our ESE students. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Pizzo?
Chief Alberti, can I put you on the spot for a second?
Yes.
Can you take a seat near Representative Lamarcas for a minute, right in front of This uniquely is a clutch of my colleagues that are incredibly interested and passionate about school safety. So this, this always piques our interest. And tell us why, if you will, and doesn't have to be terribly eloquent, and I know you weren't prepared for this, but just tell us why it's, it's better to have your own school board police than it is for, to do it part and parcel like it's going now.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Quite frankly, you know, having you, being as large as we are, the fact that we'll be able to have our own police force gives us the ability to have that unified vision up front. Because our number one customer is who? The kids. So we want to make sure that, you know, that in mind, that we have the ability to be able to have unified plans in one place, that we all do things the same. And having the ability to have our own school police force that understands our procedures, our policies, how our business is conducted in the school district, it would be for us a benefit for not just the staff, the children, the community, how we communicate internally, externally. It's all done in one place with one voice, one vision.
Give a general idea of how much it would be?
We're working on those numbers at this time.
I can step in on one answer of that. We also know, and I come from a place that has a police force, we know that the school police officer becomes part of the community. We're not saying anything negative about the, the great folks that are at our schools right now, but many of those police officers become coaches or become a place where kids know to turn to for support. They also become the relationship where some of the children who are coming in are going to say, so-and-so has this. I hear this is going to go down. So they also, they'll reach to the administration right away to see if it can be handled that way. Our ultimate goal is to obviously decline the numbers of arrests in our schools and make sure students are well informed on how to act, but also to make sure we protect them from, from reaching for the handcuffs too way too quickly. And, and with a school police force, we know they become, we can train them all as one, as he said. We can get them in the practices of what the school culture is and how we can work that. So that's huge. You know, right now, we have two-hundred-and-five officers, we, from outside, at a hundred-and-four-thousand dollars each. We also know that we're going to need some supervisors, but we, we would have to equip ourselves. So we're looking close to a pretty good number, if you do that math. We don't want to be a SWAT team. We don't want to be, you know, that type. We just want to have police officers in schools that can handle the small stuff. We have a bunch of agencies around us that can handle the major stuff. We want a team that would be just an outreach of the principal and of the teachers to be able to work with children and think of children first as our customers to make sure we're providing one more service for them and reach out. So thank you.
So Chief, I'll open up to colleagues. I know Senator Book and Senator Osmond. I used to handle the shootings and homicides of children in Miami-Dade County as a prosecutor. I have my own gun violence division. The unique nature of the school board police were that they kept things sort of internal. They did, a kid's destiny and future was not determined by what might have happened or what situation. So if it's kept sort of in that school board police, it's often a very good idea. Unless someone convinces me otherwise, you also have to include a mental health or wellness component about it as well. Something's wrong at home when the thirteen-year-old's loading a Glock on Instagram and then posting it to everybody or on TikTok. So just be mindful of that. I'm a huge opponent of the idea. I think it's a wonderful idea and supportive of it, but I want to throw it out to some of my colleagues. Senator Book, and then Dr. Osmond, and Robyn Barman.
Thank you, Chair. And I, I echo some of the comments that have been made. I think I would just like to get a deeper sense of your vision for a unified command, making sure that if there is something that goes down, how does that, how do you interface with BSO? What does that look like? Because I, I want to make sure that, yes, we are in the schools. There's, I hate to use the term community policing because that's kind of come under fire at some time. But yes, you are a part of the community, but also, like, where is the tie-in? I don't want to go back on some of the incredible work that has been done with the commission after some of the tragedies that have occurred here, that we're not utilizing some larger picture, unified command where everybody knows what's going on at any given time. I don't, the siloed piece of it concerns me, as we've talked about before. And from a dollars and cents perspective, it is great. And while you do have, what's it's a hundred-and-eight thousand dollars, a hundred-and-four thousand dollars for two-hundred-and-five officers, you also need, what you need to outfit those guys, the technology to support those guys. You can't just send them out there. So can you give us, while we've heard the vision, a little bit more from your law enforcement perspective of what that could look like?
Yeah, I mean, so the idea, I mean, we're, we're, we have a consultant that we're working with to put this plan forth for the school board, to present for the plan for the police force. But the plan is going to be implemented in stages. We obviously wouldn't be pulling out the officer today and tomorrow. We have our own police. It'd be something that would integrate through the years to come. You speak of partnership. I mean, this is not a, now this Broward County Public Schools Police and everybody else is out. This is a complete partnership. Because while we may have the responsibility during a school day, law enforcement is twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. So that collaboration that we have with them, it'll continue. It actually give them more time to be able to work with us and do partnership things with us together, do proactive stuff, not always be about an active assailant, or there's always things that are negative. I want to kind of focus on more the positive things, getting kids when they're young, having programs, talk about mental health, having things that we can work from our end, that we have that positive influence on children about what the police looks like to a young child. So I think we're sitting in a, in a perfect position to make that effect. We won't see, probably see the changes for years to come. But I think if we start gradually implementing this plan, it will give the opportunity to the agencies to be able to plan for their own budgets, to be able to scale down on their SROs, and for us to scale up on our end.
Thanks. Dr. Osmond, Rep. Barman, and I know Representative Lamarcas, Vice Chair Woodson also.
So, thank you. And I really appreciate this conversation and doing the due diligence to see the possibilities. It's been something that's been talked about for years, but without the funding, you're not able to even explore it. And when we think about policing, policing inside of a school is different than policing in the community. And to just be very candid, when we look at where we are right now, where as a county, we have created a culture to give kids civil citations in schools when we can instead of arresting them. And then we have police departments like Creek and Carl Springs as choosing to arrest those kids, especially the black ones, instead of giving them the civil citation. When we have a unified police department inside, we're better able to foster the spirit and culture of keeping kids in school and having them be arrested as the last result. They won't say this, but I will. Right now, when you're trying to do something in the school with law enforcement, your authority in your direction is limited in the extent that the actual law enforcement department may have a different idea and a different philosophy. Many of those agencies work very well with the school district and what they're trying to carry out with the kids, because they don't like the data. When kids are suspended, they're in jail, they get farther and farther behind. And as we all know, it just sets them up to commit more crimes. So I see it as something, if it's thought out and it's planned and it's phased in, that could possibly really provide a better level of safety to the school district. I remember how officers, we would be tied up with SRO contracts for months, because some of the cities wants the officers to be able to leave the campus and go deal with crime in the community while they should be SROs. So now we have laws that say that they have to be on the campus. But prior to that law, that was always a struggle. So there are nuances from a business perspective. If we get certain cities whose budgets just can't afford the SROs for their school, then the district has to pick up that funding from somewhere to make it happen. So this is a conversation that I believe we should continue to have. But we can't leave the school board out on an island to have it alone like we're starting it today. If there is some committee or whatever that's addressing this issue, I think that we should have legislators involved right from the beginning as we're working together. Because it's not just the school board. We are all Broward County. So we have to come and support them. We can see how we can balance the different things with the commission. I just know with a lot of the schools, even with school budgets, where they have to choose whether to have a teacher or a safety officer. And I'm just painting the real picture of the needs. Because a lot of times, we talk on a higher level, but we don't really understand the needs. And then the staff is going to be politically correct. I don't have to be. So I just think it's very important that we take this serious and that as a delegation, we join in partnership with our school district to go through all the options to see how we can have better levels of safety and work with an internal police department, or at least do enough research that we have a definitive position one way or the other. And I don't think money, you know, should be the option. If we come up with that number, we probably can get, especially with some bipartisan help, we can get some funding, you know, over a period of time with a plan. The school district can't fund it on their own. I want to go on record and say that. We're going to have to help with the funding on the state level in order to make this happen. But I'm not promoting police that our kids are going to start back in two thousand and twelve. Broward was arresting more kids, especially black kids, in school than any other district in the state of Florida. And right now, if you look at the numbers, you have two police departments, Creek and Carl Springs, and I'm going to keep saying it, and in the days to come, I'm going to be saying it louder, that's going back to that same trend. And for me, that's not an option.
Thanks, Dr. Rep. Barman.
Yes. I actually have two questions regarding the safety of our students. I know you're talking about creating a police force. I've been part of the studies that looked into that, so I know how costly it is. The parents in my community, and I met briefly with the leaders of a group of parents, there are four hundred of them, are incredibly concerned about not just the police, because we have police there now, but more importantly, the, the guns and the weapons being brought into the school. And they have spoken time and again to different people in the school district, and they want to know about when are they getting metal detectors? There's new technology, like, I think it's called Eagle Eye, where in the parking lot and on the grounds, it can detect a weapon. Because if you put one SRO officer in there at Cypress Bay, right, there's five thousand kids. Like, that's, you would have to definitely fund multiple. But more importantly, it's more than the, the person that's in that building. It's all the other things you can do. And I promised them that I was going to ask you today, what are, where are you with that? Because since I was on the school board and Dr. Osmond was on the school board, we talked about metal detectors. We talked, oh, you were not, you were?
I was.
Yeah, yeah. She wasn't for them, but they want to know, they want to know, what are you, what are you, where are you with that? Because they just get, they feel they get a lot of just like lip service with that. So where are you?
Dr. Lakata?
That's a great question, as that was part of the evaluation instrument that the Chair and I worked on this morning before, on my evaluation. Because it's enough time of talking. It's time to put it to the, to the, to the test. Metal detectors aren't an answer all end all. We know they can be circumvented, and children are smart. And that's why I said, safety isn't done at one day. You got to do it every day. However, when the referendum that was passed by the great citizens of Broward County, when all of that is going to our police force that we're paying for, that we're subcontracting to, to municipalities, leaves us in a tough spot for purchasing and buying. If we are able to free up that money for officers, then we can move more money into that safety that the voters voted for and shift that into metal detectors. We are going to put a plan together very shortly. That's going to happen. We're going to see some testing. Some of the big pieces that you're talking about are expensive, but they're much more accommodating for large schools. So I, I hear you, and that's going to be rolled out as we, we go through this year.
All right. And then my second question, and when Dr. Osmond talked about the figures of arrests, it wasn't just black and brown students, it was special needs students. We had the highest number of special needs students being arrested. And we also have a very high number of special needs students being Baker acted. A bill was passed to allow applied behavior analysis therapists in the school district. Your ESE Advisory Council is having an emergency meeting today because your principals are not letting those therapists in the school, which the bill gives the principal the discretion. And when you talk about behaviors, and, and that's where it starts. And when you can't de-escalate a child, that turns into a Baker Act a lot of the time. And we have such a high Baker Act number in this county and in the state in terms of students. So what are you going to do in terms of implementing that bill to fidelity and allowing those therapists into those schools?
There's two parts to that answer. First of all, the communication piece to the principals is huge and having them understand it. There's a lot going on with principals, so that's, that's huge. The second piece is I met with the ESE group and, of my department and, and Dr. Hepburn. They'll be coming to the board, a new position for Executive Director for Mental Health. That'll work directly with that. And we're also looking into providing a two, not one, two mobile units for our Baker Acts. So we can hold it internally, though our school district folks can handle it and handle them versus an outside agency who we use right now. So we want to bring it internally, make sure that we have trained psychologists or mental health behavior specialists showing up to these Baker acting sites, and make sure they understand that although it's gray, we have, the police officer or the law enforcement officer has an obligation to follow through. There's also a gray area about communication with parents. And I've learned over the last few years, because where I come from exceeded anyone in those Baker Acts, and it was reduced significantly. So there are some gray areas we can work on. Communication to the principals is key, but also we're working on creating that mental health mobile unit for these Baker Acts, two of them, not one, so they can be dispatched immediately to these schools to assist the schools in the proper techniques and the proper counseling and staying in statute to protect children and make sure we go to the full extent of that.
Go to Rep. Lamarcas. Thank you, Chair. So I do want, I do want to take the opportunity to put some background to the superintendent's comment about the ninety-four. If I went, my mom's Sicilian, so if I went home with only a ninety-four, I probably would have gotten the wooden spoon. That said, this issue is tremendously important to, to all of us, but to me as well. And I wanted to kind of talk briefly from, from a historical standpoint. In two thousand and nineteen, we passed, the legislature passed the school safety bill that included guardians, correct? I did not vote for that bill because of the school board in our community. I was against my party, but I did not vote for it because I was told at the time we didn't want guardians. But when the cost of these SROs became the cost what they are, there are guardians here in Broward County. Am I correct, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I felt like I didn't get the whole story. I voted against principal for community, and I didn't get the whole story. That said, then tried to work out something with Sheriff Tony, Speaker Oliva at the time, Representative Chevron Jones, myself, Commissioner Udine, and some other folks. There might have been a, a school board member or two. I know John was in the room when we talked about this. If we're going to ask the taxpayers for money to keep kids safe in school, which I'm, I'm with the Chair on this, I think we need to figure out a way to go to the cities. I live in Lighthouse Point. We don't have a single public school there. Hillsborough Beach doesn't. Lauderdale by the Sea doesn't. A lot of my municipalities don't. Fort Lauderdale, Oakland, Fort Lauderdale, Pompano Beach, Deerfield Beach do. So those taxpayers have to pay into their municipal tax bill to supplement what an SRO, SSO costs. So what I'd like to try to figure out is how do we go to the municipal policing? I know this can be, this is going to be an overtime kind of thing if we go to this. But how do we go to revenue neutral for this, for the taxpayer of Hallandale or Hollywood, wherever, wherever there's a police department and they're funding money for SROs, SSOs, and ask kindly that those municipalities reduce their taxpayers' burden? Because if we're going to have a separate line item for public safety in schools, school security, school police, whatever it is, I just think that every one of the two-point-two million people in Broward, two-point-one million people in Broward County, or homeowners that are paying property taxes are taxed equally. I'm not opposed to it, which might surprise some, but I want to make sure that everybody's being taxed fairly and evenly. And as we sit, where we are sitting right now, I know it'd be a burden on, on communities that are barely making that tax bill right now. So just, just a concern of mine, keep that in your formula, and know that I'm happy to sit down and be supportive of the idea. So we're going to go to Rep. Woodson, Representative Dunkley. Good morning. Good to see you. And I know Patricia Williams. I do want to just mention one thing, because this is something I spent so long on, and I fully agree with Representative Lamarcas. But more specifically, just looking at data, since seventeen sixty-four, when the Enoch Brown massacre occurred, where seven or eight students were scalped, and so was the teacher, up until today, of the one thousand, I believe, and eighteen students who have been killed at school, two have been black and three have been Hispanic. Black kids are killed, and I know this all too well, from nine-thirty at night until two-thirty in the morning, overwhelmingly, with thirty-eight-point-eight percent Hispanic and thirty-six-point-four percent. Chief, I'm going to tell you right now, it's dead on arrival if your school board police idea is only from the beginning of the school hour to the end of the school hour. A lot of what your task and responsibility is going to be, and this speaks to Representative Lamarcas, the way we're going to get dollars out of other cities-
Lamarcus, the way we're going to get dollars out of other cities and work with them, is a lot of your policing is going to be fluid, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You're going to be noticing trends, conversations publicly, beefs between groups, and you're going to see in real time escalations that will occur and will result in the shooting or death of our kids. And with these demographics, you can't do that from 7:00 AM until 4:00 PM. That's just not when it happens in bulk. So be mindful that that continuity and that sort of idea has to be contemplated so you guys can see trends at 9:45 at night, well in anticipation of something happening the next morning. Representative Woodson.
Chair, do you mind if the, Chief, can you explain right now? Because we do have our district security operations center that I believe is 24/7, where we do right now take those threats and work through the days. Am I correct, Chief?
But if you're going to answer that question, just, John, respectfully, are you watching TikTok, Snapchat, Facebook, Instagram, tracking, knowing?
Yeah, we have a partnership with the Florida, the Office of Safe Schools. They actually have a active social media monitoring, and we have a 24/7, 365 operations.
So right now, if I send you a video clip of a Broward County student who's 13 years old loading a 9mm Glock and walking down the street with it, what do you guys do about it now?
So we would partner with the local law enforcement to see where that event is happening, but making them aware to see if there's a search warrant we can execute.
No, you can't. Under 790.21, a minor in possession of a firearm is a misdemeanor, and there is no exception under 90115 for a minor in possession of a firearm without a misdemeanor presence requirement of a police officer being present while the event's happening. That's the problem. Okay, Representative Woodson.
Thank you, Chair. Sir, thank you very much. My question has to do with, I know that you want to have an independent police department, and it makes sense in light of the issues that we have been facing when it comes to safety of our children. However, when you are doing your cost analysis, have you factored into some of those services that might be offered by BSO that you can contract with even though you have an independent police department? Then the cost saving would be used to have more officers in the school, because I know that is one of the major issues. Have you taken that into consideration even though you want to have an independent police force?
Yes, so we're still on the stages where we're developing the plan to be presented. That is actually, in fact, one of the options that we have on the table to look at that, where we can cost some costs somewhere else, yes.
Thank you.
And I know Representative Williams. Listen, the next item on the agenda, don't worry, we're not going to beat you up as much as Chief's getting beat up right now, so, but good job.
That's okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Representative.
Dr. LaCotta, I'm happy to hear that we're having this conversation. I mentioned this as soon as our former superintendent started, but it was like voted down or mashed down or ignored altogether. But I would like to hear, how would you actually deal with some of the smaller cities that's taking the brunt of paying for our SROs that, you know, when the other cities, as Chip Lamarcus mentioned, don't have schools in their districts or in their cities? For an example, city of Lauderdale Lakes, they pay the brunt of all the SROs that they're using. What do you have in mind that helped that out?
So that's one of the things that's inequitable about us subcontracting out, because certain cities are paying a lot more than other cities. And we know that municipalities have different rates of benefits, different rates of non-salary. So if they, we have that breakdown, we've met with the police officer group multiple times, and we know that some cities are far more expensive to employ than others. Others also have a much larger tax base to be able to handle that, and I think that's what you're referring to. With this ability, we would also be able to level the playing field on that, because some of the smaller municipalities are really struggling with that piece. And that's inequity, when we know that some of those communities can't afford, some can. And that's not what we're about. We're not about that. We are educators, and we want to protect what comes into the school more than what's going on in school, because we know that coming into the school is where it's the problem. So when you asked me that question, this would make a much more even equitable line for the cities not to see the stress or the burden of an already over tax burdened community, while we were able to even it out from our standpoint and make sure it's all equitable across the board that we're providing that service versus some paying a lot more than others, as it could be if you go back in the financials on it.
Representative Panchowski.
Thank you, Chair, and I really appreciate this discussion. The idea is interesting. I think what you keep hearing is it's all about the execution and the implementation. There are so many factors that you're balancing when you're balancing safety. Being safe is also a school that has a strong sense of community, where people feel connected, feel that sense of belonging, and that's also part of safety. Having a uniform training for SROs, I think, is vital because their job is slightly different or is different in certain ways than your average police officer. One concern I do have is something that Senator Book brought up, and that is the creation of a silo. In my experience, one of the worst things we do when we're trying to have comprehensive policies and helping people is that we start building artificial silos and people stay in their silo, and then that lack of communication also leads to a lack of recognizing when someone needs help. It's also the balance of, we don't want to be putting kids in jail who don't belong there. We were all kids. Most of what we did did not end up on social media. Good for us. But I bring that up because it's about finding that balance, but it's also about recognizing when there's a threat and that everybody's on deck for that from the mental health perspective to the security perspective. I also have a question of how that would impact, given that there is such a police shortage to begin with. And I wouldn't want to have a situation like we had in the behavioral health area where the schools started becoming behavioral health providers, and then they were taking all the community behavioral health providers away from the behavioral health, the community providers. So I think it's great we're having this discussion. I think it's a wonderful, it's not yay or nay. I think it's a more complex discussion than that, and which is why I appreciate all the input we're hearing here, because it is multifaceted. For me, it will be about how does, what does that execution look like? What are the unintended consequences? And to make sure that everything we're doing is bringing all the stakeholders and all the partners together, because in the end, our communities are only as strong as the public schools are and only as strong as our students and our children knowing they have a place where they belong and they are safe and they are cheered on and cared for.
So I'd like to respond to that. First of all, thank you. And I did say in the cafeteria, these are tough conversations that we have to have and can't be afraid of, because we're charged to do these things. What is Miami-Dade and what is Palm Beach doing that they have their own police force and it's working for them? You know, our consultant did Montgomery County, but he also created Palm Beach Counties, and I was part of that when we did that. And Miami-Dade's, we use that as a model, and they have a Safe School Center where they work off of working on training, and they actually train FBI up there. It's become such a great program because it is integrated with the sheriff's office and the local municipalities. So our consultant is the one who built these police forces in school districts. So we didn't nickel and dime and get someone who might be able to tell us. We got someone who has already done it multiple times. And if it's going to work, that's the person, that's the group he's using to make it work. It's a time thing, it's, we got to look at it, it's expense thing, but are they better than us because they have a police force? That's one of the things we want to make sure that we answer, and that's going to be answered when we get that. And then we'll bring it to the board and we'll decide on it as we look at it. But it's an important factor. It's an important factor because large school districts usually have their own police force.
Mrs. Hickson.
Thank you. I also wanted to just bring to light that we, it's important for us to have good partners in our behavior threat assessments. You know, the term behavior threat assessment often brings different ideas of what that is, but the whole point is to bring together a team, so to direct someone's answer about the mental health piece. The threat assessment is to identify students that are struggling because of behavior that they're exhibiting, and it isn't to punish them or to put them in jail. It is to make sure you understand what the concern is and how do you provide them services to make sure that they are successful. So having our own police force would help to strengthen that behavior threat assessment team, because right now, it could be any officer that comes, that has time to come and be part of that team, but they don't really know the student. So to have your own police force where you have that SRO who is a part of the community in the school, to be able to be part of that team would be a better insight and a better help for the student, because the threat assessments are not there to put the students in jail. You have to identify what the problem is before you can help them. And I will also say thank you to all of the representatives and the delegation for voting to have the mental health coordinator in each of the districts, because that also speaks to the mental health piece, because those serious behavioral threat assessments that indicate someone is a high risk, it is then the job of the mental health coordinator in the district to ensure that those students are receiving the services that's been deemed they need and that they're actually, they're helping them. Because we saw in the Parkland shooting that that, the shooter had more services than anybody, I think, ever did in the whole world, but it wasn't effective, and there was no one coordinating those services for him, so it wasn't helpful. So I just want to say thank you very much for voting for that mental health coordinator piece, because it's really important to make sure that we don't just say we're giving them services, but we are actually making sure we're helping them to be successful.
Thank you. And just to add on, the safety plan that comes out of that behavioral threat assessment is extremely important, that that safety plan is followed with fidelity, because if that student is bringing hypothetically weapons to school, then in their safety plan, maybe they shouldn't be even able to bring a backpack to school. And I just wanted to add on to Rep. Barnum's question before earlier. I think it's extremely important that our parents are helping us as the first line of defense, checking their students' backpacks, going in their rooms, checking their cars, making sure they don't have access to weapons or guns, and they're not bringing them to school. And that we have a great see something, say something program with Fortify Florida and Safer Watch. So we are getting tips and we are preventing violence from happening before it happens. And then we are also doing randomized metal detector wand-ing, and we have ammunition stiffing dogs, so that we are preventing these weapons from getting into our schools.
I know Senator Polsky wants to talk about another topic. I know, I think, yeah.
I have a few comments on a few different things, but I feel like we're running out of time and we haven't talked about many topics. The issue with, the issue with guns being brought to school is mostly from guns in homes. For the sixth year in a row, I will file safer storage of guns. There is no reason why guns shouldn't be locked up in a home, and we have a law in the books, it is obviously not effective. So I would love the district's support, thank you, John, I would love the district's support in, you know, putting a bill like that on your legislative priorities, because that's where it all starts. A second bill I wanted to talk about, it does relate to mental health. Rep. Cassell and I, for the second year, are going to file a bill to get scholarship or loan reimbursement funding for mental health professionals for underserved areas. There aren't enough mental health professionals. So hopefully, that also could be on your agenda, and that could bring more school counselors to your, available to you. But also, I would love to see you all training your oldest students on going to a career in mental health. I mean, I'm assuming you still have AP Psychology, I hope, good. But, you know, things like that to get people interested, just like teachers. You know, we don't have enough kids going to education. So I think that's something that for your high school students, you can focus on those career choices, because they're really lacking. I would like to switch gears, if possible, not to minimize, obviously, what we were talking about, but I really want to get your perspective on what's happening with the voucher schools and how that is going and funding and, you know, the numbers to the extent that you have it, that you can share. You know, I know that the numbers have been kind of overwhelming the number of people in the programs and the voucher program, and that's taking away from your students. So how are you managing financially with that, and what are you seeing?
Without a flavor to it, the voucher system, we don't know the exact impact of it. We lost 3,200 students here in Broward, but most of those were families that moved within Florida, from what we understand, simply because Broward County is not building developments, Palm Beach County is, Pasco County is, it's a lot cheaper to live in Pasco and up there. So the voucher program, though, is not going to have its impact till later, because it's been inundated and packed, and we know the funding has been somewhat capped at a finite number, does it get bigger? And if it does, it will have an impact on the later, on the later in the year, if there is any kind of recourse towards that 800, 600, or whatever it would be. I don't know if it had a serious impact on students quite yet, because we don't track them anymore in that way. We're not, our systems do not track them. Two years ago, I could tell you exactly where every student went. That no longer is part of that system, and it's unfortunate we can't see that. I do know that, you know, I always refer to it as, you know, the pizza that's been delivered with eight slices every year is now being delivered with seven slices, and that's, we've got to figure that out. And we'll work through that, but I don't know if it had a massive impact on enrollment, but we'll see the impact on the financial piece, because there's only so much money, taxpayer money that goes through the state. So that's without a flavor on it, it's just what we see right now.
What was the loss of enrollment the year before? 3,200 this year, what was it last year?
I think it was 36. Before me, I think it was 35, 36. Yeah, somewhere in there, thank you, somewhere in there. But again, the people that are moving in here, that are buying the property, are not coming with families, and families are realizing it's cheaper to live somewhere else. That seems to be our biggest loss within the state or within the southern states.
If I may, sir, just to add to that, so where the biggest impact would be to us, when the voucher system was expanded last year to exclude prior, I'm sorry, two years ago, they excluded, they took out the prior public attendance requirement, so you never had to be in our school to take advantage of it, and then they took out the income level. So a lot of the students that perhaps took advantage of the vouchers in Broward were never in our schools anyway. So it didn't really affect our enrollment in that regard. The legislature did put a reserve amount into the budget, so if there's more students that take advantage than they anticipated, it would come out of that reserve before it hit the district. Where what we're asking for the legislature to do, if they surpass and that reserve gets depleted, instead of taking the money from us to cover the difference, that the legislature funds that portion.
Rep. Barnum.
I was just going to point out that really, I don't know if you're working with your consortiums, but the reserve is one-time money, that's not reoccurring funds. And they've already surpassed that, and you haven't had your FTE week to figure out where your funding is. So I think it's really important that you work with the other school districts, because next year, yeah, we moved up the base student allocation, that's inflated because you compressed the categoricals that we were getting anyway. So you need to make sure that that reserve money becomes reoccurring within the FEFP, because those students are going to stay where they were. And you're right, seven out of 10 of the new voucher students are coming from, are already in a private school, and are, they're millionaires, taking their coupon for their school. So it is a real problem.
Our deputy, Marte, she's on the calls with all the CFOs throughout the state, so this is something that they discuss, and they're definitely on top of it, and it's also included in our legislative platform.
I would just like to add, Rep. Mark, I got a wooden spoon at home, but I got it from Sister Anna at school, and then when I got home as well. Who else want to say something? Ms. Marte? Just got back with a check and it bounced?
No.
It did not, okay. Come, come, come here.
Thank you, sir.
Just a reminder that we have not done your evaluation yet.
Just a reminder, I'm in drop.
Mom, Dad, guys, don't embarrass me at school.
On a serious note, thank you, Superintendent, for always giving me a chance to do what we all know is right. I think one of the things that, from a CFO perspective, and I do sit on the finance council led by Ron Steiger, who most of you know, it's the reconciliation of the vouchers. So last year, and the state is working on this, DOE is working on this, so they understand the issue, but there, in the case of Broward, there were in excess of 1,700, we don't have the final count, students who took the voucher but then ended up in Broward County public schools. So we did not get paid for those students. That is a huge amount of money. Miami-Dade's is even larger than ours. So that, I'm estimating the impact to Broward, it's $16 million, and that is a huge amount of money, so.
Ms. Marte, 16 million?
16 million. I know my Boston, go ahead. 16 million, I know my Boston, go ahead, Superintendent, you can pick on me, my Boston. 16 million, 1-6, 1-6. So it's a huge issue, and we really, really, and I know you meet often with Mr. Steiger, sir, so it's a big issue. I think Miami-Dade says it's 25 million, and that is money we're entitled to, because we educated those students for the full year. Thank you, thank you for allowing me that moment.
So you would like an equitable system of reconciliation on a per diem basis of where the student actually was?
And that's part of the unintended consequence of new legislation, right? The family took the money, so the legislature and the Step Up for Children followed the process, and I know the CFOs across the state are very willing to help come up with that reconciliation process and expedite it so that the payments aren't made out to the families who ultimately attend public schools. And again, the Department of Ed, Suzanne Pridgen and Mark Eggers are working under the Commissioner's leadership to resolve this, everyone's aware of it. We are about to get our final calc from last year, and we have our fingers crossed we're getting our money, but we need more than fingers crossed, we need the dollars.
Chair, I know that, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I know this is something that the delegation and John brought to us when we were having this voucher discussion, and it was always a conversation of, well, we don't know, we don't know what that's going to look like, but at the end of the day, these are students that are now in Broward County public schools that we're not being reimbursed for. Those are dollars that are out our door, $16 million, that's a significant number, and we need to make sure that you're getting those reimbursements back, and there's no way for us going forward to do that accounting in any other way, is there?
So that's a great question, Senator Book. I'm not sure I have the answer right now, but I meet with, as Mr. Sullivan said, I meet with FL DOE and the CFO, Finance Council, at least once a month at this time of year. During session, we meet every week, our meeting is tomorrow. I will work with Mr. Steiger and Cory Wheeler, our leadership, to try to proffer a plan for that reconciliation.
It's a significant float.
It is.
It's a significant.
Well, what's worse is if we never get it.
Well, yeah.
You know, how do you recoup the dollars from a family who took the voucher? That's the question.
Mr. Chair, really, really quick.
Yep, we got a hard stop.
Since we have Ms. Marte at the table, many of us remember, at the end of the session, there was this drive-by where this capital outlay bill was pushed for the district to share capital outlay dollars with charter schools. Has that impacted the district, or how do you foresee that money being moved now to share with charter schools impacting the district?
So there were a couple of bills around charter school and millage sharing, some of the best of my recollection, Senator, they weren't at the end of session. One of them was...
No, this one was definitely at the end of session, Ms. Marte.
And it was the sharing of capital millage or the referendum millage?
The share of the capital outlay dollars, and it was definitely, it was a clear drive-by.
So that bill impacted us this year, because the calculation is based on two factors. How much does state contribute to PICO and what our base is for debt? So this year, it impacted our budget about 12 million. So the answer is, we do not have $12 million that would be spent on our deferred maintenance, which the last time our capital staff calculated it was in excess of $2 billion with a B dollars. So it definitely has an impact. One would argue that the compromise, if you would, around that is where charter schools are non-public buildings. There's perhaps a fix that would treat them differently. If you have charter schools that are owned by our municipalities, it would make sense that we would treat them the same as our public schools, because they are schools that our taxpayers fund.
And thank you. We made those arguments, and I asked that question, because that bill came in a unique way, where it missed a lot of committees, and it was a clear drive-by, and some of us were outraged about it. And so since we had this platform today and we're talking about money, I wanted to get a specific amount, which you articulated, so that when we go to session in a few months, we can speak to the impact that that bill, and maybe you guys will consider giving us a one-pager. We need to understand when we make policy in the state of Florida, how it either helps or hurt our school district, and that's the piece that I see is missing. Policies are passed in Tallahassee, like Representative Lamarcus talked about, the guardians and him voting against the bill. Well, the issue was, nobody, I guess, talked to law enforcement to understand that there were not physically enough police officers in the state of Florida to put on every school campus. So then you had to become creative and go to guardians that had ex-military or police. But we need to know in numbers, the bills that we passed the last legislative session, and how they've helped, I want to be balancing my thinking, and how they've hurt the district. That gives us a better look at what we're doing, and it becomes a reality. It's not just us arguing one side or the other. The data always gives us the truth.
All right, and Superintendent?
First of all, thank you all for being here. This conversation will continue for a long time. You all have my personal cell number. Please, if you don't, let me know. I answer the phone no matter what. We're going to give you a white paper on both these topics. I think it's important, there are some issues, there are some concerns, but if you can walk with a piece of paper in your hand and understand the perceptions and perspectives of what we're dealing with, it'll be very much helpful, plus what you added into your perspectives into that. So we're serious, we mean it, and we thank you, as we're dealing with children, and you saw them today, and if that didn't brighten your day, then I'm not sure what could. So thank you very much for being here. Can I close this at this time, or does someone else need to close?
You may. Chief, thank you. Chief, thank you. Thank you for caring about.
School Board Chair is closing.
Thank you so much, everyone, for being here today, and we are going to continue this conversation, it doesn't end here, and thank you for helping us for Broward County Public Schools to become an A school district, coming soon.